Call to order, our meeting for February 12th, 2020.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
President.
Commissioner Howard?
President.
Chair Weymeyer?
President.
Vice Chair Dickinson. Commissioner Dunn?
President.
Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance, and we will have an invocation if our minister shows up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll catch it next time. Brings us to correspondence and organizational business. We'll come back to that once Derek gets here, since he had to stop and help a motorist. Any public comment? We're making great time. Consent agenda today would include tax change order of the amount of a negative $19,433.48. Janet said that's because of appeals. And, uh... Meeting minutes per February 5th of this year. There are motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
All right. First item is to discuss the status of HVAC improvements in the district court.
Morning.
Morning, Brandon.
All right, so I've been working with Latimer Summers on the design for the HVAC system for the district court. They worked on this project, if you recall, about five years ago, and they got 90% of the planning done at that point. So if we have the option now, we can stick with their plan, which I'm happy with, the design that they came up with five years ago, and we can just pick up where we left off from there and just start moving forward. We'll get the rest of the fee proposal for the remainder of the project that needs to be completed from them. The budget price for that total project is around $278,000. We have an option of replacing the boiler at the same time, if we'd like, for an additional $35,000. The boiler right now is 1974, I think. But we're not having any issues with it, but it's something that eventually we're gonna need to replace.
Obviously, probably a little bit of economiescale doing it now while there's a contractor there, but is there anything like... Is it particularly heavy, have to use equipment? Like any, you know, take down a wall to get it in and out? Any reason like it would have to be done now? Or could we pay maybe 20%, 10% more and have it done, you know, by a contractor at a later date once we have issues?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I mean, we can absolutely do that. I mean, the main thing, I think, for us is gonna be an efficiency thing, you know, 1974 technology compared to now. But, um, no, I mean, I... I can't imagine we would have a huge price increase if we chose to do this later on replacing that boiler.
Is it, you know, what kind of system we designed? What kind of boiler, 80% efficient that's going in, or...
Um, I don't recall the efficiency on the boiler they were looking at. I know it's a pretty high efficiency, especially compared to the one we have now. But no, I don't, I don't know the rating on it.
Do you know what the efficiency on the one now is?
I couldn't even guess. It's low, low, low. I'm sure it's not very efficient at all.
I remember a few years ago, of course, that's strange how them boilers are regulated. Probably no, the State Forestry Department actually is the one that comes around and, and inspects them and grades them, and that's a strange organization to do boilers. But I know several years ago, they did. I remember when they went down there, and whether they give an efficiency report on it at that time, I, I don't remember. I know there was no complaints about it. I mean, that's when we was getting ready to do the other one, you know, in the courthouse. That's about, they never even really... If I remember, I really never even... Of course, that's a long time ago. Things have changed, you know.
Right.
This is 278, is this just an estimate, basically?
Yes. Yeah, this is just the engineer's estimate on how much it would cost roughly. This isn't even, of course, this could change. We hope it will go down significantly when we put this out to bid to do all this work.
And you said to tell you, this engineer's worked on this five years ago?
Yes.
Where are we at on money on the engineers? Was that taking care of most of that back then, or we...
Uh, yeah, yeah, almost all of their fees were paid five years ago. And so I don't know what the remainder is right now, but yeah, the bulk of it has already been taken care of.
That's the benefit of going with this plan, Rick, is if we change it, that's fine, but then we're gonna incur $10,000, $20,000, $30,000 in additional engineering fees to have them recreate another plan. When Brandon and I have reviewed this one, and he tells me it's a perfectly adequate design that's gonna work well.
Nothing's changed on the building or anything? It should require a different plan, I would...
Nothing weird on the system or as far as where materials are sourced from? Or nothing odd that's gonna be hard to maintain? Or expensive to procure, anything like that? Yeah, no, not at all.
They've always been a good company in the past, things they've done. I don't know why it would be any different now.
What are we needing on this?
Well, um... Basically, if you are okay with, generally with this as a template for moving forward, then we're gonna have them go ahead, Latimer Summers, go ahead and finish up the plans or the drawing. And then, once we have that, we will bid that particular plan. So, um, I don't know if at this juncture we really need a motion. I suppose if you were to make one, it would be a motion to approve us moving forward with Latimer Summers and having them finish the design for this particular plan, so...
I'll make that motion.
Second, alrighty.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
I wouldn't mind seeing what the efficiency on the new boiler and the old boiler is, I mean...
Sure.
One question, Brandon, on this. Set it, uh, cooling system gives us remote control. What is that, what does that actually mean?
Yeah, so that, um, the courthouse, the old courthouse is set up the same kinda way. So there's a computer program where we can pull that thing up, and we can adjust set points on different rooms based on the need. Right now, if there's a problem, we would need to physically go over to the, to the building, you know, make adjustments or whatever. This will also give us the ability to receive alarms that the system may be having. It'll let us know what's going on before anybody else can tell what's going on.
Turning down everybody's heat over the weekend when nobody's there, each individual thermostat, you could turn set points and like that too, so...
Exactly.
Manage the whole building?
So our intention will be, once we get these final plans from Latimer Summers, unless you tell us otherwise, we'll go ahead and, and put an RFP together based on that drawing and solicit bids. And as you all know, we're not committing anything. We're just getting bids from interested contractors on this particular piece of work, so...
That's good. Alrighty, Brandon's gonna stay up here. We're gonna talk next about the, uh... granting permission to solicit bids for slurry coat application to the annex parking lot.
Okay, yeah, and so phase one of that project for the parking lot, of course, was to get the cracks sealed up. We got that done in the fall. So the next phase of that is to apply this slurry coat to that parking lot, and then we'll need to do the striping at the same time. The company that does the slurry coat will not do striping also, so those will be two separate, two separate, separate companies doing that. The budget price for the slurry coat is $35,000 to $40,000. And for the re-striping is $5,000. So that would bring the total project to somewhere around $40,000 to $45,000.
This is a pretty good pothole developing this side of that front, that sign?
Yeah.
To the west of the sign, and then maybe it sunk a little around the culvert that we had put in?
Yeah, I noticed that too. We'll, uh, we'll get those addressed before they put that slurry coat down.
Alright.
Have we ever put bids out for something like this before? I'm just curious, are there's many companies in the area that do that?
Uh, I don't know that we have. I mean, this is the first time that I've been involved with one, a slurry coat application, but I don't...
There'll be a couple up in the city that do it. Not here, Kell, it wouldn't.
I notice out there, Brandon, there's, there's still a lot of cracks that didn't get sealed. If you walk, walk out there in the parking lot, there's a lot of cracks didn't get sealed.
Right, so they, so the cracks...
Slurry coat supposed to solve that then?
So the cracks that they sealed, they were looking for cracks that were a quarter inch or larger was kinda the rule of thumb they were going with. They've assured me that the slurry coat will cover anything smaller than that. So when they did the crack sealing, that's what they were looking for.
Slurry coat's essentially a coat of oil and sand small aggregate, right?
Yep.
Is there interest in soliciting bids for the slurry coat application?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the soliciting of bids for the slurry coat application for the annex parking lot.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Alright. Our third option is to discuss options regarding the painting of the historic courthouse.
Yeah, so this is the painting on the exterior of the building, and we're looking at the trim around the windows, and, um... Eventually, the, uh, the clock towers, the bell tower, there's some metal trim on the, on the roof that will need to be done as well. That total budget price is somewhere around $200,000 to $250,000. Wanted to, uh, present the option of doing only the windows and the railing, pretty much everything below the roof line on the courthouse. And that budget price is about $60,000, if we were to do that.
You're telling me that's the most urgent, really, because it's wood, right?
Correct, yeah, there's a lot of, that paint's been peeling pretty bad, and, uh, we're down to bare wood in quite a few places. So it's, it's pretty important that we get that sealed up.
I assume from that email from Janet that we're not gonna get any grant help on that building this year, right?
Well, we, uh, we've talked about a couple of other grant opportunities that we will definitely look into, but not from the Heritage Trust Fund grant. But we are, Derek and I are going to have a meeting with Wayne Duderstadt, who helped us write the grant, and see where he thinks we can go from here.
We, we think that there is potentially significant private interest in helping us with that clock tower. I've been surprised by the number of people that have reached out to talk about it. One of the things that this option does, just staying away from the roof, doing the windows, doing the porches, the railing, it allows us to potentially take on the repair of the clock tower and the painting of it, and the painting of the roof at the same time. And given that the equipment is so expensive to mobilize and do that type of work, it could make some sense. At this point, we're looking at 2021 on that. But given that we've got exposed wood on the courthouse, believe pretty strongly that we oughta take care of this. And to say nothing of it'll make the courthouse, I mean, obviously, the aesthetic appeal will increase if we do that, particularly if you walk on those porches. I mean, they really need painted, the railings. I mean, there's pretty ornate railings along there that we get that taken care of. The roof of the porch needs it in a bad way, and, I don't know, $60,000 is, it's a pretty fair price. And I remember when we talked about this at a prior meeting, and you were exactly right, Cole. What we've learned about the roof is its equipment rentals. Like, the, the piece of equipment that it takes to reach the, you know, the clock tower and certain pieces of that roof, it's unbelievably expensive. So we forego all of that here because we don't, you know, we don't need that equipment to get the windows.
Are those windows in good enough shape? They don't, with a wood rod or anything like that? They need to be re-coffed and...
Yeah, so that's included in this bid. Any, any, um, resealing around those windows, any wood rot that needs to be addressed, or any of the wood grain that's opened up due to the, you know, being so dry from being exposed like that? They'll, they'll get all that sealed up and ready to go before they paint it.
I would be, personally, I would be in favor of the $60,000 and get the, that by waiting on the other... Tragic guest tasks can, work can be coming in, and, uh, other grants may come available, plus...
Well, and we'll apply for the heritage grant again. And the fact that we are putting more money into the courthouse via painting it, I think will be that much more attractive to them next year. So, yeah, we'll, we'll apply for those funds again. And that's to say nothing of, of working with, potentially working with private investors who may wanna donate to that cause, so...
Alright, so, uh, the price you have is essentially somebody giving you an idea. We would need to put it through the formal bid process, though?
Correct, yes.
So, we'd be looking for permission for that today?
So, yeah, we are looking for a motion to solicit bids for the painting of the windows and the porch, basically.
Make a motion to that effect?
Make a motion to approve soliciting bids for this project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you, Brandon. Alright, we'll go back and grab our consent agenda as well as staff reports.
So Crestview, we talked a week ago. We had a burst water pipe over there, and we were worried that it was gonna cost anywhere from $10,000 to $25,000 to fix it. We got good news on that front. Turns out that that water line is not necessary. It just supplied water to an older fire suppression system. That system is not even needed. We worked with the Ottawa Fire Department. They gave us assurances, don't need it. There's not a health or safety hazard to not have it. In fact, they even agreed to cap it. So we are literally out no money on this project. So that was as good a news as we could have gotten. We, prior to having that knowledge, we spoke with Diana Dean over there, and we did discuss the possibility of her having to move out of there and the long-term viability of that building. And, and it was a good exercise because she understands that the life of that building isn't long at this point, and that the visitor's center could be a viable option in the future. And so I'm pleased because this allows us to continue to work towards that, but it, it doesn't have to be urgently. We can work with their board a little bit and continue to discuss options. But as we've talked about, we talked about at the retreat, I, you know, I'm not sure putting more money into Crestview at any point's gonna be a great idea given where that building is at. And so, so, um... All of these projects, and obviously, we're looking at a substantial outlay of tax dollars, but this is exactly why we've budgeted the way we've budgeted. I mean, at this juncture, we're not gonna incur a dime of debt for this. We easily have the reserves to cover these projects, and it's exactly what the vision's been from the beginning, budget hard, budget aggressively, so that you increase reserve funds, then you use your own money to do this. And so you're seeing a lot of projects at once, but this is also kind of the, I mean, we're... Once we have a lot of this done, I mean, the bigger projects, I struggle to find what they are. I mean, there's little ones here and there, but I think we'll be in a good spot. And I think we've got the right maintenance director to put us on a maintenance plan so that we're not in this spot again. So I will be excited when all of this is done, and, and then we shift our focus to, you know, roads and bridges or any number of things. So that's all I have.
Alright. I said consent agenda, that's correspondence and organizational business. You want to tie it in with staff reports? Anything else before I go around the room? Alright.
Talking about Crestview, do you know all the, uh... All the people that have records out there? Do you know who all, all of them are besides, besides us?
Yes, we do. We have a list in my office that have contracts with us to have storage space out there.
Like, at point in time, we'd, we'd need to contact them and say they might be needing to look for another spot.
Yeah, and that'll be part of the long-term planning process. And there's a lot. I mean, for the visitor's center, I mean, there's just a lot of considerations. They have so much stuff out there at the Historical Society that there's no conceivable way they could use... I mean, there are pieces of the visitor's center that aren't being utilized, but they would fill those spaces up so fast, so... But yeah, certainly, that'll be part of the process, Roy, is finding record storage for, not only for us, but potentially for those others as well.
I think we're down to just a couple compared to where it used to be numerous people out there using that space for storage. Alright, we'll go around for staff reports. Sheriff, if you have anything, or Casey?
I'll let Casey go first.
Alright.
Okay, so speaking of tourism, I have started working with Wingert Signs to design a reface for both the billboard signs. I know that came up at the, um, retreat, and so we're working on that, and we'll get those changed sooner than later. So that's good. I'm also working with Gala on the KAC Service Awards, and we're gonna hold that at the February 26th meeting. So the plan is that the KAC Service Awards will be much like they have been done in the past, and then we're gonna reevaluate Franklin County Service Awards for 2020 at the end of the year. Um, and then the other thing I wanted to give an update on is Civic Plus, which is our website vendor. Dustin and I are doing, um, some preliminary work to take care of a free upgrade that we have through our contract with them. So the main goal is to make the website look more user-friendly and be more user-friendly for our constituents, but it's a free upgrade, so we're gonna use, utilize that to the best of our ability. I think that's really it.
Thank you. Sheriff?
Returned yesterday from a long weekend out in DC for the winter conference of the National Sheriff's Association. Had some really good training there. Couple of high-level trainees, one in particular from the National Command and Staff College. Met with the presenters after that class, and they've, they've offered to bring some courses here that we can host and, uh, and bring people in from across the country for that. So that's, that's good news. That's kinda what we were looking to be able to do when we, when we established that training center in our building. And just wanted to give you an update that that's, those things are moving forward, and it's, uh, some good stuff there. Also, talked about some new programs and things that are out there. One, one is an app to get our messaging out, so I wanted to meet with Casey, kinda tap into her expertise there is that what's, you know, what, what we need and what, what is, what's really efficient. So I wanna touch base with her. And then one thing that was really, um, that I think at some point, I'll bring it back to Derek, and we can have a discussion. There's a trend, and I think I've mentioned it before, but I have more information now, is that there's a trend to provide insurance for inmates, and there's companies that will do that. There's just so many moving parts in that that, um, I wanna get with Derek and make sure that what we're looking at, see if it's even necessary for us. I, um, I don't wanna just have insurance that we know we're never gonna use. I wanna be, I want us to be protected, but I want us to do it in the smartest way that we can. And so we'll have those discussions moving forward before, I'm not looking to do anything real soon. Definitely not gonna do it without the input of our counselor and administrator. So, uh, that's really all I have, unless you guys have questions for me.
I wonder if our insurance carrier would be interested in putting together a product to pool the risk of health costs for, for inmates? Because I mean, if you go through a private company, they're gonna get a profit off of it. If we could just pool the risk, whereas we didn't get hit with a cancer or one other...
And maybe, I've never talked with KCAMP about that, so, very good question. Maybe that's something that we can reach out to them and see...
Have you talked to other jails in the area? Is this a common practice, or is this...
In Kansas, there's, um, I only know of one... Well, there's only, there's a few places that do it. The closest to us, I believe, is Allen County, and he was not there, so I do wanna reach out to him. Wyandotte County does it as well. So, um, I'm gonna talk to some of those, some of those places, find out really how often it gets used. I know that there's some particular, there's some quirky things with it, such as they have to be, um, they have to be admitted to the hospital. It has to be at least 24 hours. We still have deductibles. Right now, there's not a mental health coverage that is with that. Most of our, um, admissions that we have that are long-term are mental health-related. It would not address those type of issues. So there's a lot of, like I say, a lot of moving parts. So I wanna find out, in application, how it, how it works and how effective it is to see if it's something that we need or, or not. But we are exploring that. And then, at the same time, our association still went to the Capitol to, once again, lobby to get the, the Medicaid allowed for those that are non-convicted that are justice-involved. So we're still working on, on that, on the legislative side of it as well. But in the meantime, as you guys know, these medical expenses, sometimes they, they crush our budget. And if there's anything we can do to kinda protect that, then we're still looking at that to find what those answers may be.
A lot of the problems, a lot of them's had these medical problems for a long time, but once they get cars ready, they decide now at our expense they'll get it taken care of.
That is correct. I also am hoping to find, uh, uh, insurance that would cover dialysis because that is not inpatient, but we are having to take people to dialysis inpatient, but we are having to take people to dialysis and then bring them back, and county has all that expense. And I'm hoping that we can find somebody that has a product to help cover some of those expenses for us as well.
Worth looking into.
Thank you.
Paul, anything from SCDC?
Just two things. The community partner applications are out right now to all of our community partners, all of those ELC. I did touch base with most of them yesterday. If I didn't physically talk to them, I left them messages just to remind them they can reach out to me if they have any questions about anything. So, we are planning for those to be on our, on your agenda on March 9th for the study session, so they're getting ready for that. Also, some of you know, I went and represented us on Friday at the tax hearing for the Senate Tax Committee, where our Senator Karen Tyson is carrying a bill for transparency, truth in taxation, and shared my thoughts with her on that on behalf of the county. And so, she was also in town on Monday night for discussions, and I know John Cohen spoke at that meeting, how he believed that there was already transparency, that we publish in the newspaper, we hold all of our public meetings. It was interesting to hear all of the different taxing organizations that were there and, how they believe that they're already providing that truth in taxation that the state believes that we're not providing. So, I would definitely invite you guys to talk to me about that or ask questions about that to our Senator or follow along online with that bill. So, that's going to be a real impact on us.
It costs a lot of tax dollars to comply with that.
It is going to cost a lot of tax dollars, and that was brought up Monday night at the meeting. For, for us, just in postage alone, we have about 14,000 parcels. So, if you consider 50 cents per, per piece of mail for postage, we would be at $7,000 just for postage alone. And it was brought up at the meeting on Monday night, where Karen was speaking and brought some other, she brought some other proponents of this bill with her to speak to the group also. They brought up, you know, can't use bulk mail, and Jody was at that meeting, our treasurer, Jody, was at that meeting also, and she has experience, obviously, sending out a large mailing to all the taxpayers. So, she was able to provide information to the group on timing and stuff. So, basically, Jody, when she sends out the tax statements in November, she is working with them, starting at the beginning of October, making sure that everything is set up to send out that mailing. And then, when I turn the tax rolls over to her the 1st of November, then it still takes her, as you all know, when you see your tax statements in your mailbox, two to three more weeks to see that tax statement by the time they get them printed and stuffed and mailed. And that's how we get that bulk rate mailing, is by having someone sort it and send it all out for us. We wouldn't have the benefit of that timeline when we're doing this, because we would be constrained to about, about two weeks of time, as my understanding, possibly as long as a month. But when we have to have a 10-day advance notice, that limits how much time you have. And so, we don't really feel like at this time that we would be able to use bulk mail, but it just wouldn't, wouldn't work. I am still having conversations with Karen on, you know, on our behalf to make sure that our position is heard and, and concerns are raised. And she says that she's willing to work on these things and offer up some amendments. I hope that that, I hope that that is true and correct, and that we can, if, if this is the position of the state and they're going to move this forward, that we can find some, some common ground. Obviously, this is another layer of government on us on top of the tax lid. So, she did offer up Monday night that as part of this bill, as an amendment, that she would be willing to put in the bill to lift the tax lid at the same time. She said that in the meeting on Monday night. We have not seen that amendment yet, so.
Hopefully, she's being true and transparent, so.
It's my understanding she's kind of been all over the map on whether or not that tax lid is actually going to be removed. So, it will be interesting to see whether or not it is. I will tell you, I still struggle with the transparency bit, because i, if you're telling local governments they need to be transparent, you are, I mean, you're effectively telling us that we're not. And I really struggle with that. It insinuates that we are doing something behind closed doors, which we are not. Like, every year that I have been here, the five of you have sat there and you have asked, I mean, you've literally asked, please come attend our budget hearings. Like, we do this every year. We tell people, this is the, I mean, literally, it comes out of your mouth. This is the most important policy decision that we, the Board of Commissioners, make. Please come attend. Nobody ever comes. Like, it's hard to answer questions that you don't get. Like, I would walk any one of our 25,000 people through our budget process. I would explain our taxation system to them, any one of them, but we don't get those questions. Janet doesn't get those questions. How can we answer questions that we're not getting? I will tell you, we've got Casey now. We're going to try. I mean, I will tell you, we'll put stuff out on social media. We will have enhanced communications regarding our budget, but there's not a transparency problem to begin with. So, I, it's hard for me to know exactly what we're targeting or what we're trying to explain when we just don't get questions. So, that's, that's what I struggle with primarily.
I have discussed with Karen, and I know that there are some other people in our community who've discussed with her also what we could do differently than the very cumbersome, expensive mailing. And, I mean, from my point of view in the clerk's office, my huge concern about the mailing is that comes at a time, the required timeframe of that comes at a time when we're already doing early voting in my office. And as you guys know, I try to provide late hours, I try to provide Saturday hours, and that comes at a cost to my staff. They either have to work overtime and take away time from their families, or they have to shift their hours that they're working. And, and that has to work for, for us too in the office to be able to get all the regular work done too. So, if we're having to do this mailing, which specifically states in the bill that it has to come from the county clerk's office, and, and we're not able to, to move our budget at all, then how do, how do I staff for that to be able to get that done without sacrificing those early voting hours, which are so important to me at providing service to this community and being able to vote? I mean, I think that voting is, is the most important, the most important thing for our citizens to be able to have their voice heard. And if I'm limiting the hours that we have early voting time because I have to send out this cumbersome mailing, I don't like that. So, we did talk with Karen about whether we could, the state could potentially have a website where all this information is collected, if we could put this on our county website. And because presumably, every county has a website, so could they put all this information on their website? I mean, none of us taxing entities are disputing that, that we're willing to be more transparent if the state feels like we're not being transparent. But we're disputing this cumbersome process that's expensive.
Sure.
What was the, what was the impetus of this in the first place? Where did, where did it originate?
Rising, rising tax bills. I mean, people understand that their, that their, their values of their property are going up, but they don't feel like that their tax bill should go up with the increased value. So, they feel their tax bill should stay the same, even though the value of their property rises. So, Karen says she's responding to those concerns of, of rising tax cost, tax bills.
When they sell their property, do they reap the value of the, you know, do they reap the reward of the enhanced value then?
That was brought up to Karen, and so.
Might be a silly question, but does that mean if the state raises tax, they have to do the same thing?
So, currently, in the tax bill, as it's written, the state will continue to get 1.5 mils, whatever that means. So, as our valuations go up, as we have new improvements, the state would gain tax dollars from those new improvements, from those rising valuations. Additionally, the 20 mils for school district is exempt from that also. So, as those values rise, as the new improvements happen, as we, as Paul brings new businesses, businesses into the community, the schools would benefit from that also. Karen did say, again, at the Monday meeting, that she was going to offer amendment. We have not seen it yet or heard anything additional about it, but she said she was going to offer an amendment to remove the 1.5 mils that the state currently gets and offset that money in their budget with income tax and sales tax. So, I don't know what that means, whether that will be new income tax and new sales tax, or they feel they have money in their budget that they can shift over there. I don't know what that means. Again, we have not seen that amendment yet, but she said that is going to be offered up. I understand that they are having a, a committee meeting on Thursday, that they will be working this bill, so we may see some of those amendments come out of that.
Commissioners' comments, board reports. Roy?
I haven't been anywhere.
All righty. Rick?
I attended Richmond City Council meeting last night. They didn't have a lot on the agenda in their public comment part. They had a gentleman that was in there, I guess he hit a open manhole in the city of Richmond, had damage to his vehicle. He's been, he met with him before on this. He came back, wondered what they were going to do about it. They discussed it. Their lawyer actually was at the meeting last night. They gave you some things they wanted him to bring to them first before they decide what they're going to do. Appeared they wanted him to go through his personal insurance. He doesn't want to do that. So, they were waiting on, the attorney was waiting on some paperwork from him to decide what the city of Richmond was going to do about that. Had another gentleman in there complaining about a city culvert is plugged. They told him that they would send a backhoe down and try to clear both ends of that culvert and help out. He said he has flooding in this area. Another gentleman was in there, was upset because their reconnect fee is $70. If the water's shut off and they have to reconnect it, it's $70. He thought that was too much. And he didn't leave real happy, but they assured him that that's what it was going to remain, so. Then they had an update on a lady that had worked for the company that they leased their computers from. She has been the one that's helped them when they had problems with their computers. She's no longer working for this company, but has advised them that for a fee, she will still help them with their computers when they have issues. Their attorney was going to check on that. They wanted to meet with the company they're leasing from, being she no longer works for them, and see if that's an okay thing or whether they're not okay with that. So, they were going to do that. They had three things on new business. Talk about their reconnect fees, an update on the municipal court that they've been working on with the code officials and working with, getting a court going with some of the other towns. And then they were going to talk about uniforms for the city worker. For some reason, the mayor decided he wanted to go into executive session in the middle of the meeting before all that started. I did not stay for the end of the executive session, so I was not there for those three items that were on the agenda. And that's all I've been to since last meeting.
Not, Janet did get ahold of me the other day on the elections study group, become board, and I've agreed to volunteer to sit in on that board. I think it'd be a pretty, I know it's a very testy subject, and we'll get a lot of good views. She's got a good variety of people on there that'll, that'll give her a direct view, you know, on the subject. And that's probably what you need, you know, in this type of deal. Not a long gag about it, just come right out, you know, because it is a really touchy piece of, of subject. Only other thing, yesterday, I did work with the Solvate Authority, Janet White, as a project manager still on that, and we, the management team, and we reapplied for our nonprofit status with the Lake Region. And I did read an article on Lynn County, and they had a long discussion over the same subject on the tax bill. And it doesn't sound like Mr. Lamb, which is their clerk, is really, he, he talked exactly like you're talking. I mean, you know, just not why. I mean, you know, more than anything. That's why I always said about big rulebook. People look at that policy manual, and, but what, I never do that. Well, somebody did, you know, and it's kind of, kind of the deal with the tax deal, probably somebody did something so they think they got to push it down on all of us, so. That, that's it.
All right. Our next meeting is Wednesday, the 19th. We also have a joint luncheon that listed as being at the city, so. There's nothing else, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned.